This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, so I'm sure Lori is coming in a few minutes and we're going to begin. Let me start recording again. All right.
Recording in progress.
We will call in Shannon.
Shannon Dunham here.
Ben?
Ben Hershey here.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein here.
Megan?
Megan Harvey here.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle here.
And Cindy Krasinski here. Welcome. So the only announcement I have right now before we go on to correspondence is to say that we'll be roll calling into an executive session at the end of our regular session, and we will be adjourning from the executive session. We will not be returning. Okay? All right, so do we have correspondence?
I have no correspondence to report.
Okay, do we have gifts?
I have no gifts to report.
Okay, do we do have Mackenzie here and I'm sure she is going to give us a student update. Evening.
Good evening. So last Friday, some members attended a roundtable event to talk to other student councils about how to improve in many areas. We are currently planning a spirit week next for next week with a senior versus staff basketball game. And on the 14th, which is during that week, some of the members are planning Hershey for kisses for kindness, which is giving Hershey kisses with a kindness card to just thank each of students for being good participants and just for being good students.
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay, so now is our time for public comments, and I will open up our public comment. Ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and state who you are if you would like to speak. So this is going to be one of those short meetings again, I can tell. But I'm going to give that a minute. Some people may not have even gotten in. We don't want to rush it. So we'll give it a minute. And if you do want to speak, make sure you show me right away. One more minute. All right, seeing nobody. Oh, wait a minute, here's Lori. So let's let Lori come in. Good evening, Lori. We have all called in, but we're glad. I told everybody you would be able to make it soon. So we're glad you could make it, and we are just about to close public speak because I have no one who is indicating that they'd like to talk. So.
Okay, do you need me to say Lori Garcia here?
Yeah, no, but that's great. Thank you. We had definitely had it formed. Back to Leclair. Time for your superintendent update.
Thank you. I do have a few things this evening, if you'll bear with me. The first is probably the most exciting. I would like to acknowledge the East Hampton High School We the People team that once again won the state competition for the sixth year. So let that all sink in because they are just amazing. And I should point out before I go any further, I know all of you know this, but for anyone that might listen to this meeting after, just keep in mind, this is a different group of students every single year. So it's not like we got one group of kids and we just keep them going. It's a different group of students every single year. So they'll be heading to DC this spring. So I just want to recognize the team. Kudos to the team. Their amazing teacher, Mrs. Brown, and all the alumni and coaches that support them all year long as they prepare for the competitions. So just to reiterate, they won the state competition again against all other schools across the state that compete in the We the People program in Boston, and that's public and private schools that compete in that program. So it's a really great honor. And they're just amazing. So I can't say enough about them, but I wanted to recognize them tonight. And as a community, I know we all wish them well as they head to the national competition this spring. I also want to acknowledge the kindergarten teachers and all of the staff that worked so hard for an amazing kindergarten information night that we recently held at Mountain View. We had huge turnout at that event. Many families brought their young ones in. We did tours. There was a presentation. It was a great event, and I think we're going to have a lot of kindergartners next year. So thank you to everyone that stepped up to do that. And for any potential kindergarten families that did not get to attend that event, they can reach out to the central office, Jean Libby, and she can provide any information about the process for registration. And finally, I just want to acknowledge that this week is National School Counseling Week. So on behalf of the school counselors in the district, I want to read just a brief proclamation. And it says, whereas school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential. And whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, talents, as these traits relate to career awareness and development. And whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children. Whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves. And whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society. And whereas comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. Therefore, I, Dr. Leclair, do hereby proclaim February 6th to the 10th, 2023 as National School Counseling Week. And I just want to say the names of our counselors in the district because they're all amazing. At the high school, we have Chris Savaro, who's our team leader, Kathleen Collins, Jennifer Metzger, and Hannah Fleishman. And at Mountain View, we have Heidi Bai, Jan Norman, Ryan Dermody, Kristen Eklund, and our school counseling intern for the high school in Mountain View School is Madison O'Shea. So I just want to publicly acknowledge the great work that they all do and honor them this week during National School Counseling Week. And that's what I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I can just say, I don't know what will ever happen if We the People ever loses because there's such a a, to me, this is a phenomenal record. Six years in a row to win state championship is just fantastic. I mean, there's, there's not even words. So congratulations. And as you say, it's not like you have the same kids every single year. So to pull together a team every single year that's that stellar, I think, is just fantastic. So congratulations to them.
And if I can just say that I was one of the parents at that kindergarten registration night. My son was thrilled. He ran around the school. He was not shy. He enjoyed getting by the land. And then the next day, he looked at me in the morning and he said, so today is kindergarten. There's, you know, inside the Harvey house, there's a little confusion that registration or, you know, information night doesn't directly lead the next morning into kindergarten, but ready. It was awesome. The teachers were great, and everything was really great for the kids. They loved it.
I love it. I love it. All right. Okay, so Nick, you are up.
Thank you. For my monthly business office report this month, I've got our FY23 local appropriation report. At this time, or at the time of publication of this memo, 50.15% of our FY23 appropriation had either been spent or is encumbered, which at this point in the year is pretty much about where we should be. I am continuing to monitor the FY23 budget for areas to watch and transfers that may be needed. Currently, areas of particular concern are utility bills and vocational tuition. I think the utility bills probably go without saying. I mean, you've all received a gas and electric bill recently. I'm sure and it likely shocked you. And but the vocational tuition, I just want to speak to for a moment because as you recall, when you revoked the budget based on what the city council passed, those were the two lines that we we cut the money off of. So, you know, as the year goes on, you know, that's eventually going to run out and, you know, the deficit will have to be covered. Anyway, I'm also monitoring spending from grants and revolving accounts to ensure any shortfall we may face in the future can be covered. A little note about our FY24 budget process. I'm continuing work involved with the budget process. Obviously, a timeline has been developed and approved that outlines meeting dates with the finance subcommittee. Includes a tentative public budget hearing date as well as various internal deadlines for me really, which guide the process. I'm currently putting together the initial draft of the FY24 proposed operating budget as well as preparing related documents for the budget book. We've had several meetings at this time with the leadership team, which has certainly been an important part of the process, and we will begin our work with the finance subcommittee very soon. Number three, potential grant opportunity to supplement the $40,000 earmark that East Hampton Public Schools received from the Commonwealth to upgrade our EHS security cameras. We're going to be applying for a safer schools and communities grant, which if successful could bring it up to $50,000 if we're approved that we could use to complete another phase of the security upgrade there. We've met to develop a phased plan as well as to plan the steps involved in applying for the grant because it's relatively involved, this particular grant. We've also been in contact with the East Hampton Police Department because part of the grant application would include an endorsement from them as a requirement for the application. So I know that Julian Levin's going to be working on that this week. And, you know, we hope to have it out soon. I believe the RFP would be due, I think it's the 17th of February. So quick. And lastly, my personnel report for January of 2023. We had six new hires this last month with primarily substitute teachers along with one paraeducator at Mountain View. We had four separations during the course of a month. We had a paraeducator, two, sorry, two paraeducators resigned, a substitute teacher, as well as an LPN who retired at the end of the month. And we had one transfer, a former preschool paraprofessional who transitioned into a pre-K teacher role upon a vacancy. So current vacancies in the district, there's a special ed teacher slash behavior interventionist at Mountain View that's still vacant from last month. We currently have four vacant paraeducator positions at Mountain View as well as the groundskeeper for the district because he had to be filled. So that is my report for the month.
Thank you. Any questions? Lori?
Are exit interviews being done to find out why we're losing so many paraeducators?
Not through my office. I can't speak to the building, though. I don't know if that process occurs there. Perhaps Dr. Leclair knows.
We have had several paraeducators that we've worked with to transition into teaching roles. So they've secured emergency licenses and they've moved into teaching roles. And then we've just lost some paraeducators. Paraeducators are fluid and they come in and out of the school district. It's not an easy job to be a paraeducator, and it's, it's not always what people anticipate it's going to be. And it's a lot of hard work. So I think it's just is not the right fit for some people.
And I, obviously, being a teacher who has worked with paraeducators, I realize all you say is very true, but it just, it was last month, I believe, that, Nick, you said there were two, and then this month, too. So that's why I'm asking.
Yep.
Correct.
All right, any other questions? Oh, mayor?
Yes, I'll apologize in advance if everything goes dark. My email yet again, the video connection sounds stable. Around the para professionals and actually something Lori brought in. So as far as exit interviews, can they happen through HR? I mean, I know when we're looking at DEIA HR practices, that the exit interview is one, it's a recommendation that all employees who are leaving city employ, like we do it down here. If somebody leaves, we like, we'd like to schedule an exit interview. Sometimes it's very cursory. Here's your COBRA paperwork. Here's your whatnot or, or your payout. But I know Emily also says, you know, overall, like, what were the determining factors? What would you improve? What did you struggle with? You know, that sort of thing. So I, I just wonder if we have kind of a step away exit interview, if that could be helpful going forward because Allison's completely right. I mean, paraeducators are very fluid. So if we can learn something from exit interviews on any level, maybe helpful.
So we do have an exit interview that we are, we have started to roll out this year, and the building administrators would, or whoever the supervisor is, have the opportunity to do that with the employee while they're still there in the building. We do the letter that the mayor just noted with the, you know, information about COBRA and everything. I certainly think we could add something to the letter that if people would like to also follow up on a process with the HR department in the city, that's fine. I think that, I think we've had some challenges and some of it. I will, I will say honestly that a lack of substitute teachers challenges us, and sometimes we have to rely on the paraeducators to fill a void where we don't have a substitute teacher. And so, you know, sometimes they're asked to do things that they're not necessarily, not necessarily what they signed up to do. So not everyone wants to be put in that position. We do offer the option, but with a lack of qualified or any substitutes, really, it has become a challenge, not just in East Hampton and every district. I mean, we're all finding ourselves in the same boat. And quite frankly, you know, people can go and get other jobs, you know, that are less stressful for probably the same amount of money. It's not, it's not easy being a paraeducator. It's a stressful job.
Understood. I just thought it was another data point would help.
Yep. Yep. So we can, yeah, we can look into adding that information on the letter.
Anyone else? Okay, Maren, did you want to talk about finance?
Yeah, there's actually, there's nothing really to report. We've got our first budget meeting on next Monday at 4:30 by Zoom. So please check out the website if you'd like to join. But it will be the just first draft, first discussion. And we're going to be focusing, I believe, on Mountain View and the high school. So that will be our first meeting. And then there's a series of meetings from there. They're all listed on the website. So that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Policy? Do we have any update? I know we have a lot of first readings that we're going to do, but I didn't know if you had anything else you wanted to share.
No, it's just that we had gotten together and decided what we're going to move forward with. So there's really nothing else besides what's already on the agenda.
Okay, it's going to be a long read. Megan, you better have some water before you do that. So now we are at the section for other. Is there an other that anyone like, would like to add or talk about? Nope. All right. Okay, well, now we have action items. So Megan, you are up. Should, wait a minute, hold on, hold on. So let me ask you a question. Our first one is changes to the program studies.
That's Mr. Evans.
Yeah, it's just written, it's written differently. It's not like it's separate things. So I don't want to.
And we, we put it there, Chair, because we require a vote. So that's why we put in.
Right. I just expected to see that just separately because the rest are just like kind of, you know, very quick reads. So Mr. Evans, you are up.
Thank you very much, folks. I hope you all received the document that outlined the changes that were anticipated for next year's program of studies. I'll try to go through them briefly. I won't go through all of the details just to give you the highlights and answer whatever questions you might have. So they're broken up by department. I'll start with the math department. The math department is looking to add a course called Quantitative Reasoning and Mathematical Modeling. This grew out of a desire to have an alternative to a course that we were offering pre-calculus academic. This is a class that seniors were often taking that didn't really feel like it was a good fit for the students that ended up there, but it wasn't, it didn't really, they weren't interested in some of the other options. Pre-calculus really should be a class that students take in their junior year in preparation for taking calculus in their senior year. For seniors to be taking it when they may or may not be taking math in college, it really didn't feel like it was serving their, their particular needs. So the math department did some research and worked with Julian Levin to develop this particular course, Quantitative Reasoning and Mathematical Modeling, which builds off skills that they've developed in Algebra II, but also frames them in that, those new skills in ways that feel much more relevant and much more important, I hope, to the students that are taking the class versus pre-calculus, which is very theoretical and really trying to lay the groundwork for calculus. So that's the first class that is on here, and that's a new course. We're excited. The next department is the World Language Department. And what we are trying to do here is add a, an alternative to our special, to our Spanish and French two courses. And I think Lori welcomed some of your input on this, but, you know, the transition from Spanish one through Spanish two is, is a really seamless one for many, many students. And for other students, it's a real challenge. We do have a two-year of the same language graduation requirement. And we do find that there are a number of students who get hung up trying to move from, trying to complete the second year. And oftentimes, our own teachers will say, you know, the student got by in Spanish one, but they really, I really don't know if they're prepared for the rigor that's coming in Spanish two. And I've heard that argument since for the third year, for the third school that I've been an administrator in, that some kids just are not there. So our hope with this particular course, Spanish Language and Culture and French Language and Culture, is to provide an alternative to the Level Two course that continues their work, but paces it a little bit differently, does a little more work in culture, and brings students from where they are to as far as we can bring them. We are making it very clear, I think you can see in the description, that this is not a course that students that are interested in a four-year college should be taking because it would probably not meet that requirement. We are also clear that this is a teacher recommendation course that students can't just sign up for it because it feels like the easier option. Students will be steered toward that course when the teacher feels like it's the appropriate choice for them. So again, not taking the place of anything, but adding on to the options for students for the second level of world language. Go ahead, Lori.
I appreciate your mentioning me at the beginning of this part of the presentation. And I am quite surprised because in my vast experience in so many schools, I've really never seen this done at Level Two. I've seen this done in the middle school. I've seen it as a proposal for first year level, but never for second year. And I really am afraid that students are going to opt to take that. I know you're saying it's a recommendation, but I think they're going to take the easy way out. I'm really concerned about having such a course.
I appreciate that. And we have had that very conversation in the, in the school. When I say teacher recommendation, it has to be. It's not an option for students to just say, oh, I think I'll go to that one. They have to be identified by the, by the teacher ahead of time to say, this student needs to be in this class based on what I saw from there in, in the first level course. We do not, and we are not going to open it up to student choice.
I just feel that we need to build our languages in other ways to more rigorous offerings to middle school. So this means that teachers, are we hiring more teachers for this? I, I don't see what, when you say culture, what that turns into is more of a history course and social studies. You know, I, I've taught a lot of different levels. I've taught students, I've been the one on the other side saying, this student should not be taking a language. Students with educational needs, it becomes so challenging and frustrating. I don't think that language is for everybody, but I just see that we have limited resources and a lot of people in this district want to build a department. I mean, I'm not even mentioning the dual language. I'm talking about middle school and talking about AP levels. And I really don't see that we need to have this type of course for students who aren't going to benefit from learning the language in a way that they're going to be able to speak it and communicate. I think that if we had, you know, all these extra teaching hours available, okay, but I'd rather see us develop the middle school. I can't support it. I'm sorry.
So I appreciate those comments, and I would agree on developing a more rigorous middle school program. I don't, you know, I don't, not representing the middle school here. The course would not be an addition to. So what we typically do is have X number of sections of Spanish two or French two. And what we would do is have one of those sections be converted to this one. So the number of courses that we offer remains the same, and the number of teaching blocks that have to be filled remains the same. That simply converts one of the Spanish and/or French twos to this, this option. And, you know, I think we agree on some things here. Lori, I do very much respect your, your perspective as a, as a teacher here and our teachers who both, you know, have a lot of experience as well. We've been having this conversation for a few years now. And I do believe that they see a need and that this will fill a need. You know, oftentimes, we, we have students who take the second level of the, of Spanish or French multiple times to make the graduation requirement. And it's, it's difficult. I see the mayor has her electronic hand raised. It's it's difficult. I I see the mayor has her uh electronic hand raised.
I I hear what what Lori is saying and and also um. You um, Bill, I get my question isn't. Against the co- the course itself, but. When you say it's a tr- like kids can't just choice in to that class. The conversation with their teacher or counselor or whatnot, um, I would just be worried um that. A student's having a difficult semester or year or whatnot, not sure if they're going to college or not. They take this course. And they're a little bit behind because they don't have that second year of of level two Spanish. That most colleges require. Um, and and I get, you know, I'm not saying it would be intentional, but I I worry about the kids who would like. You know, this semester just is the worst and I don't know, no, 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 I'm never going to college, da, 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 and they and I'm it. It sounds like a great class, but then it limits their options. So I don't know how that works operationally. It's kind of like just in my head, but I. I did want to say something around that.
Yeah, and the that's a that's an excellent point. I do think we we talked about that as well, like, okay, well, let's, you know, the the students making a choice and and the parent with them. Uh, to take this class in tenth grade. Um, and now maybe by the time they're moving on, they're they're ready to make a different choice. There's still the option of being able to go back and take. The standard level two um class. Um, so it, yes, it would put them in a. Awkward sort of scheduling sort of situation, but it doesn't close the door completely.
I I just I'm I'm surprised by this. If I had. Heard about issues and and if I had been able to explore it, especially with my experience, I think. I'd be more open to this, but it is interesting. This is the first year in quite some time. I happen to be teaching five classes of Spanish two, Bill. So I'm I'm very versed in Spanish two students. And from my experience, um, the only students that have trouble continuing in Spanish two. Are students that shouldn't have passed on to Spanish two. They they and sometimes this happens with colleagues. Um, they feel that, oh, I don't want to fail this student. The student needs. The credit and they help them to get that sixty and then that student then goes on. I don't know if there's a minimum requirement. Is is it a seventy or is it a just passing to go on to two?
So it's it's um. That's a quandary too, because and and Megan, I saw see your hand in there, and I know you had your hand up as well. Um, because if you. If you say that sixty is passing and uh we don't have um a separate cutoff for two. Because. How do you then? Give credit for one and then not let them go to two. It means that they have to take one again, which means that they are taking the same course that they already have credit on their transcript for. And so that becomes a, you know, a problem that's really hard to. So to resolve unless you create a separate level one course called level one B or something, but it's really the same material. Cause they're gonna go back to level one with the same level with the same students. So, yes, sixty is passing. And yes, I think that that some of our teachers feel that some of the students who are in that range who barely make it. Are not able to succeed at level two, and that's what we're finding. And so this is a potential solution. To try and help those students to meet their requirement.
Another solution is to require summer school for the student to. Really master the skills necessary in Spanish two, and that's something I've done. And I can tell you if. I I have a lot of students right now, and I I can see the whole spectrum, Bill. And I have only recommended that two students who really didn't pay attention in the beginning of any level Spanish two. You really spend a good. Uh, I don't know, the teachers in East Hampton, maybe five weeks. Of reviewing. And if students really put in that time to review, they can learn material that they didn't learn. So I it just concerns me. I just wonder what the numbers are like of students who aren't doing well. How many Spanish two classes are there in the high school right now?
Um, I think we have. Four sections of two.
And I'd be curious to know how many are not doing well in the four classes.
Yeah, I don't have that data in front of me right now. Um, but um, uh, you know, we're we're going back historically. Um, and this has been a recurring issue. We always end up with seniors with their back up against the wall. And uh, we just felt like it was time to offer something uh different. Uh, Marin had his hand up earlier, and I know that Megan had her electronic hand up.
Yeah, I mean. I appreciate you guys working on this and trying to come up with a solution. Um, I think this is a challenging situation. I mean, basically what we're saying is that. We have a requirement for two courses in language and yet. We don't want, we recognize that not everybody can get through two courses of language is basically what we're doing. So we're giving a backdoor. To students who we think are gonna fail. The second class um and give them a backdoor to still be able to meet that requirement and graduate. Um, or force them to take one or two or however many times to take. Level two class and fail it and retry again and potentially not graduate, right? So I mean, that's. That's the quandary that we're in. Um. I don't know if I, I don't know where I sit personally right now on on giving a the. The ability to basically not take second level class. Where it's a second level, I mean, it's we have two years of requirements. So it it seems more like we need to. Address the requirement conversation and really dig into that much deeper, broader conversation. As opposed to giving a sort of opt out of a requirement that we have in our district. Um, I know that's not what you're asking for here, uh, but I think that that's, at least from my perspective, I think that that is a. Bigger. A bigger conversation that maybe we really need to have instead of just creating this sort of like way out or way around. A core recric- curriculum requirement.
Yeah, and 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 uh. And Megan, I know you had your hand up. I would just quickly, uh, Marin, there are lots of different uh schools that take a very different approach to graduation requirements. Uh, I think here in Amherst, where I currently live, um, there the. Graduation requirements are incredibly stripped down compared to what we require. And um, the understanding is that if you are serious about going to a four-year college, you're going to meet the requirements like a basic. Uh, requirements like for admission to UMass would be the sort of the the standard that the counselors move students toward. Yet the graduation requirements, I think it was only it's only two years of math. In Amherst. Um, and that's the only district I'm aware of that ha- doesn't have a four-year. Graduation requirement in math. Yeah, so what's the logic there, right? Is it um that we don't want? Kids to have a rigorous education, or is it that we want students to have more options and more choices? And not box them into a single track. So once we skip away our. Our requirements, our subject level requirements. You have room for a few electives. Not a lot, but a few. Um, but most of what we do, four years of English, four years of science, four years of history, three years of science, uh, four years of. Sorry, math, English, sci- uh, social studies, three years of science, two years of world language, one year of tech, one year of fine arts, two years of. Uh, PE and health. Like now there's now what, right? There's only there's only so many options left after that. And. What, you know, again, there's a different philosophy that says. That's. There's a number of credits to earn. And if you want to go to college, we'll guide you toward getting there. But we'll give you more choice within um there if that's not what you're interested in. So. I agree, we could have a larger conversation about that. I have this conversation with other principals a lot to see. You know, what kinds of struggles they have. Certainly, the four years of math is a big deal for a lot of students. You know, the higher you go. The less accessible some of that math is. Um, and the less useful it is for most students. Um, so there's a a lot of arguments to be made about. What makes sense in terms of graduation requirements. I would welcome that conversation, but you're right, it's a bigger conversation. Right now. I think we're trying to solve a a particular problem. And I I want to acknowledge Meg, Meg had her hand up.
And then I want to weigh in. So Megan?
Yeah, my question was essentially exactly what Lori asked. I was just wondering how many students it applies to. Is it? Seven or are we talking about fifty? It sounds like that's not readily available information.
Uh, yeah, so I would say it's much closer to the first one than the second one. Uh, we anticipate that there would be one section. Maybe only just in Spanish.
So as a teacher, Lori and I usually agree, and I hate to say it, but I have a different perspective on this. And that is that as a special ed teacher, um, uh, at the high school level, my job is to um. Work as hard as I can to make it possible for my students to be able to go to. A two-year or a four-year college if they so choose. And I know I'm looking at this from a um really a special ed perspective and. Saying thank goodness because. I have a lot of students who work really hard at a language, either French or Spanish um one. And they barely pass that course. And yet they're going to be able to succeed at a community college. Um, if we can get them there, we have to graduate them and have them meet those requirements. So I look at a course like this, which requires that the teacher says. This is a student who shouldn't be taking the regular second level. This is a student who really has struggled. And I'm recommending for this class. I think it's a phenomenal um opportunity for those students. To get their two-year requirement and keep that door open for them to start at a community college. And let them have that time. At at some point, they may transfer over. This is not for. Students who are planning that four-year college. This is also not for those students who can do a language. Um, but not everybody, especially if you are a student on an IEP. Many of them really struggle um with learning um Spanish or French. So. I just, I think that this is a. A really creative idea for trying to solve. A problem that shuts the door of. Opportunity for a lot of students. And when I say a lot of students, I'm not talking about the majority of kids can go through. And do a language. And they can do two years of a language. Um, many can do four, some can do five. But for those students that that really struggle, who are really trying, I think this is a really creative opportunity. So. You know, Lori?
And I, you know how much I value what you have to say, and it's. And this year I'm actually working with a student who has um a very detailed IEP. And you would normally think this student shouldn't be in a level two class, but that's where differentiation comes in. And as an experienced teacher, I differentiate all the time. In fact, I asked the special education department. Can't we even, cause he's working very hard and he actually is grasping a lot in the regular Spanish two class. But his grades still aren't stellar, but I said, couldn't we have the option to have a pass fail, which I see as a better option? And also, community colleges do not have a two-year language requirement. So they, so you were saying in order to. But for community college, you do not need to, you were saying this will would enable kids to be able to get in. The only two-year requirement is for the four-year schools. So. I would rather see teachers, instead of creating an extra level. That would not just be for special ed students. It would be for those students who also. Don't want to have the rigors of a regular class learning the language. And I I just feel that you can adapt a course. To be able to suit any student on any IEP.
Um, I know that the community colleges do not require language, but high school requirements do. That's my point. Is that we need to open, keep that track open for students. It boxes them out of a four-year school if they only take two years of language. But it does not box them out of community college. And for a lot of kids, that's a real, real crucial. Um, ring to try to to reach. And I just. I I agree. I think this is hard. I hate closing the door and hitting thing. I. I just differ in that I don't think that we're closing the door. I think we're applying it. I love the fact that if if we could just sign up for an easier class, I think that would be terrible. But the fact that you really need a teacher to look at and say, look, we've tried. This student is really working hard. They just. This is not a a doable class for them. I don't know. I think it's a creative. Creative idea. I mean, that's me. That's a special ed. I watch my kids struggle. And I want to help them. And this is a something that my kids, I would definitely want those ones that are really trying hard. And really struggling to be able to have an opportunity like that. Anybody else on this one? This is a hot issue. Megan?
Yeah, I just had a question and a thought. I'm wondering if, as I'm listening to this, um. If one of the concerns, Lori, is like if we have this kind of additional option, if it will go from. Seven students to a larger group of students as the time goes on, because they know, oh, I I can end up in this. Less rigorous course, and so that group grows and grows. So I'm curious about if there are things we can. Build into it that are like maybe one section of the course is offered every other year. So it's not like a good solution for most, you know, it's it's a, what's the word I'm looking for? Like um inconvenient solution. It's not like a convenient thing to just go take a easier class. Right? To try to sort of limit this. I don't know. I don't, I'd be curious to hear, Bill, if that. Reasonable if there's ways to kind of avoid it becoming this like students trying to take an easier option.
So I think, you know, so. So the course, obviously, as I said, stated earlier, um. Uh, teachers need to recommend the student for the class, and the student can't just say, I'm opting for that class. Um, so then the the next question as well, will students um. Purposefully do poorly in level one so that they can now do the easier course for level two? I kind of reject that particular argument out of hand. I I don't think that students um. Operate that way. When they're in ninth grade, think I need to do poorly. I need to get this rated as sixty-one. So I can qualify for that easier class. I really don't think that students do that. If they are doing that kind of thing, then we've got bigger issues with that student and and their. Relationship to their education. Um, I I agree very much with uh. Cindy's uh comments about our special ed students um who don't have a waiver for language. Um, and who really do struggle with that. Um, but uh Megan, to answer your your question, I I really don't. Think. It's not been my experience as an educator that students um. Are that sort of. Thoughtful about how to not perform.
That's helpful. Thank you. Lori?
I have really good students who end up taking, this is a different story because I work in a district that does have Spanish one. In eighth grade, but I have many students that come in ninth grade who know Spanish one really well. And they will look at me and say, I want the easy A. So I just. It it really scares me. They they're taking the same course again because it's different, middle school, high school. It's not a credit issue. I can just see. Students who are gonna say, I want the easy way. And and that's what scares me, Bill. I I really would like to see more data. I'd like to see. The grades in the past few years. I'd like to see which students aren't doing well. Are they on plans? Is it a special education issue? You said it probably would be for Spanish and not for French. Why is that? Then that's an equity issue. I I just would like more details.
That's simply because of the demand, what what I would anticipate the demand would be. We have more issues with students having this particular issue in Spanish than we do with French. That's that's all. It wouldn't be because of. It wouldn't be an equity concern. It would be what the what the actual data is for one reason or another. The kids that tend toward French. Uh, are usually more successful at level one. Are ready for level two. Um, so I I think there's still like several more courses to go through here. Um, it sounds like you may end up in the end needing to take two different votes. I don't know, like unless we have. This kind of discussion on on some of the other stuff, which I don't think we will. Um, but I present the program studies changes altogether. I don't know if you if it it makes sense to. To approve everything else and not, you know, take a separate vote because obviously there's there's some strong feelings about this one. Uh, it's okay, Chair. I'd like to sort of. Uh, it's okay, Chair. I'd like to sort of move on with the other descriptions of the course.
I think that's a good idea.
Thank you. Uh, the next one is AP Biology. Um, AP Bio has been in the program studies in the past. Um, for one reason or another, it has not been offered recently. Um, there is one change um that I want to point out that I neglect to make before I submitted this. Um, in the AP Bio description, it um offers a prerequisite of regular biology honors or academic. Um, we would offer it uh as an option to regular biology and not after taking biology. So if a typically tenth-grade student wants to offer AP Bio instead of the honors or academic, um, they would be allowed to do that and not have to take biology first in order to get into AP Bio. Um, and uh our hope is to um then also introduce the following year AP Physics and then uh probably rotate those back and forth so students have access to AP Bio and or AP Physics on a on from one year to the next. Uh, but we'd like to add AP Bio back in for this coming year. Uh, the next two are both also in the science uh area. The Forensic Science, this course description was revised, so I'm just submitting that as a revision. Uh, and we would like to add Forensic Science Two. Uh, Forensics is a very popular class. And uh Mr. Sheehan, the instructor, um, really feels like there's more that can be done uh beyond a single semester. And uh this is also a subject that a lot of students are interested in beyond high school. So um, we'd like to add Forensic Science Two as a course. Uh, Fine Arts and Technology Department. Um, so our new um graphic arts teacher, Mr. O'Connor, would like to add these two courses that are sort of um operate side by side. One is digital illustration and the other is animation. Um, so a quirk in our schedule is that we have um we're a semester-long block schedule, but our band and chorus for continuity purposes have to run all year. Um, so they run every other day. And so in order to provide enough choices for students to do that, we need other courses to run on the opposite, on that every other day schedule. So um, we have been trying to expand the number of every other day courses options uh for a number of years. And uh Mr. O'Connor came in and said he would love to be able to do these in an every other day format. Students can take digital illustration and animation and go back and forth. They can take one or the other. Uh, and they could run completely independent of each, they'll be independent of each other, but it gives the kids who want to take band for a full year or course for a full year um more options beside what we currently offer, which is PE, uh, speech and drama. So um those are two offerings in the Fine Arts Department, which will certainly help us um help students have more options there. Finally, in the Health and um the Zed Department, uh, there's one new course that is um again being revised. Um, College and Career Readiness. This is a course that was offered in years past. Our new health teacher, Insta Murdoch, is very interested in offering this class as an elective to our juniors primarily. Um, some seniors if they if they want, but we really see this as a as a course for targeted for juniors uh to help them with all of those things that um are required in getting right and doing their college research and um all of the things that go into that. There's plenty of material there for a full course. Uh, so we'd like to offer that as an um elective option. And the last things that are in the document that I forwarded you are um revisions of our early childhood um education courses. Um, as you know, Sue Mason taught those courses incredibly successfully for I think decades is an appropriate term. Um, and she retired last year, and Miss Benson and Patty Benson has come in and taken over those courses and done a terrific job this year. Um, she looked over the program of studies descriptions and just wanted to tweak them a little bit. So what uh providing you here are just revisions of um the work that was already in there. The courses are essentially um not radically changed at all. Kids come in, students work with them. When the student, when the TOTS are not there, students are working on a child development theory and learning about various stages of child development through different um models and different theorists. So uh it's, it's a terrific course, but she had some, some things she wanted to add it in and make some revisions there. And that's all of it.
Questions, comments?
Dr. Leclerc?
Thank you. I just wanted to say um regarding the world language courses, I think that from an equity perspective, it's nice to have different levels of courses for, as you articulated, for students that may not be able to achieve um the higher level course. We do that in other content areas at the high school like mathematics, for example. So um, I think from an equity perspective, it's, it's a good idea for us to have a different option. Thank you.
Lori? And from a language perspective, I'd like to see the levels go the other way. A standard and an honors. And the standard could be taught in a less rigorous way, but not be a culture course. And offer honors and hopefully expand program to be able to encourage our students to study for the sale of by literacy test. I don't know if people are doing that in our language programs, even though at my school, we don't have a Level Five. I have encouraged kids to study for it. They've been able to get it, which is a wonderful thing to graduate with, both for getting into colleges and for employment. I'd like to see us offer more, as I said, advanced. And and I've been in in schools where there wasn't a standard and an honors, and I know how hard it was to teach the kids who really wanted to learn and excel in the language with the kids that struggled. So instead of creating a course that weakens the content area and weakens the acquisition of a language, I'd rather us go go the other way, have honors levels to put those kids who really want to excel, and then the kids who need extra support can have that in a standard course.
Bill, don't you have honors levels there already?
No, the the world language classes are not leveled that way.
Okay, okay. Okay. So that is a change that could happen in 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 the future, correct?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the uh uh that's been that way since I've arrived. I'm not sure what um what process was to come to that particular decision in the past was.
I don't, I don't know either, but um I do know at most schools, they do have an honors level. So um for those students who are really adept at this. Um, so just a couple of things. I wanted to um compliment you on what I I've seen. Just as a teacher, I love looking at some of these. Um, and I really really like the quantitative reasoning and math class. I think it's a stellar idea for a lot of students who um really struggle with math and struggle with finding its importance and its relevance. So I read this, I would sign my students up in in a flash for that class. I'd be talking to them about doing it, and I know they'd enjoy it. So I, I'm looking at this. And um I'm pretty excited. I like all the changes. I think they're creative. I think they're well thought out. Um, I love the early childhood program at East Hampton. I do talk about it a lot because I think it's a, it's a really great program. Um, and so I just want to thank you for the thought that your teachers and staff have put into this um in looking at, you know, what's best for our students.
Thank you.
I think that, Ben?
Um, I just wanted to add to that. Uh, I was looking at that College and Career Readiness class, and that looks pretty great too. Uh, just from the perspective of a community college professor, uh, seeing a lot of students come in with no idea what to do. Um, and I I hope that that class is the kind of thing that encourages some, some training. Um, I'm curious, you said it's a junior year class?
Yeah, it would probably happen in the spring of uh in the spring semester.
As in, with senior year being like applications and such and?
Yeah, so if they take it as a junior, now they are well positioned to start the process and follow their senior year.
That's great. Also, just to add to the conversation about the language class, I I'm all for options. I think, I think uh I think it makes a lot of sense also thinking about it from community college perspective. I just think like get the kids um who are, who are struggling, give them opportunities to get through. I think makes a lot of sense. I don't think it weakens it. And I don't, and I definitely don't think students are gonna kind of like scheme their way through and play, play the game to try to like get get lower grades or whatever. I think, I think we could, we could trust our students to make the right decisions. And if they aren't making those decisions, I think we can help them along the way. Seems like a good idea.
So are we, um, I'm trying to take a read. Are are we feeling like we want to do two votes? Um one for the package minus the world language, um, two classes, the Spanish culture and the French culture? And then one for just that one. Does that feel more comfortable for everybody?
I just feel like I need more data. I need to know like how many students we'd be talking about and, you know, because it was arranged when Megan brought up numbers and Bill said, oh, it would be more like the seven, but I I'd like to see how many students actually have been struggling these past few years. And if it's a more viable option to have a class that's just culture rather than thinking about having a standard and honors level, which would propel kids to excel and to continue and to truly become fluent in another language.
I I I appreciate that, Lori. I just want to point out that um you have referred to the class as just culture a couple of times. I do want to point out it's, it's also a language acquisition. It says in the, in the description, uh, this course provides an additional year of Spanish language acquisition with emphasis on practical written and oral communication and study of culture in Spanish-speaking countries. So um, so it's, it's also a language acquisition. I don't, I don't want that to be misrepresented as strictly a cultural.
Thank you. So do we want to take two votes? Does anybody have a sense?
Let's just for ease sake, take two votes. And then I I would also say, I mean, obviously with uh Dr. Leclerc's departure, not too far off here, this obviously isn't for her. Uh, but I think that um, you know, I would throw this out to you, Principal Evans, to sort of earmark this conversation and for us to you know, maybe even bring up in our conversations with our potential superintendents. But I do think that maybe we do need to have an overhaul conversation about what our requirements are for graduation and whether or not we need to look at um, are we creating two tracks? Or we want to intentionally reduce the track the way that you mentioned Amherst does? I think that that's a bigger conversation that we might want to have. I I mean, I do think we need to have that. And I think this right now sort of catches, creates a sort of safety valve for that to allow our students that need to, that we do want to get onto community college and do want to have them have, end with a graduation diploma and everything. Um, but I think we should have a bigger conversation for that. So I do think, I do want us to not forget this. Um, I want us to sort of mark this and come back to this.
Okay, so let's, let's do that. Let's take two votes. Let's um, let's do the first vote, which is just to accept everything um that uh Principal Evans has brought us and minus the world language, Spanish language and culture and French language and culture classes. So can someone make a motion for that? Hello? Do you want me to do it?
I'll make a motion that we accept the proposed courses um to expand our options for our students.
Which, well?
As presented by Principal Evans, less without the language class.
Okay.
Recommendations.
Okay, do we have a sec?
I second that.
Okay, so let's take that vote. Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, I.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, I.
Merron?
Merron Goldstein, I.
Mayor?
Maryla Chappelle, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
And Cindy Kuzinski, I. Okay, so now um does someone want to make a motion for the other two um, the world language classes?
I'll make a motion that we accept the proposal for a language uh and cultural class um as an additional option to meet the two-year requirement of either French or Spanish at the high school for graduation.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any more discussion before we have a vote? No? Okay, Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Lori?
Lori Garcia abstain.
Okay, Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, I.
Merron?
Merron Goldstein, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
Maryla Chappelle, sorry.
Maryla Chappelle, I.
And Cindy Kuzinski, I. All right, um, I do, you know, I would love to have a further discussion, honestly, about more honors classes in language. I think that whether we've done it in the past, most high schools that I know do offer that. And I think perhaps it's time to start looking at that. And then I like Merron's idea of really looking at um, you know, just the whole requirements and seeing if we need to make changes.
Uh, thank you all. I really do appreciate the conversation here. It was thoughtful and informative to me. Um, Lori, I really do appreciate your uh your input on these things. And I know that you're coming from a perspective of, that is student-centered and trying to maintain high standards. And I I deeply appreciate that. So I also thank everybody for their votes. Have a lovely evening.
Thank you. Bill, I want to thank you. And you see, I didn't say no. I just wanted more information. No, really, because I've been in the classroom saying, why is the student in here? We need to have the level like you just said. I felt that way many times. But I I just don't want to see us limit students. So that's why I wanted more data. But I had never said no. I really just wanted more information. So thank you.
Do you know that?
Thank you, Bill.
Right.
No, I think your, your comments were well thought out. And 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 you've got a different perspective. You see a lot more kids too. Um, I'm just, you know, I think it's an ongoing discussion. We'll just have to continue to have it every year. So, all right, are we ready for the other matters faction? If we are, you can hit it, Megan. Do you have them all?
I'm lining up my papers.
It's a lot. So if you do not want to sit here and listen to us, um, feel free, because
Why you would not?
It's so exciting.
All right, I make a motion to approve the school payroll dated one twenty-six, twenty twenty-three in the amount of five hundred and sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirteen cents.
I second that.
Okay, Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, I.
Merron?
Merron Goldstein, I.
Mayor?
Maryla Chappelle, I.
And Cindy Kuzinski, I. All right, I got everybody. Y'all moved, so I'm making sure I didn't miss anybody. Okay, next one.
I make a motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated one twenty-six, twenty twenty-three in the amount of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and six dollars and sixty-eight cents.
I second that.
All right, Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, I.
Merron?
Merron Goldstein, I.
Mayor?
Maryla Chappelle, I.
Cindy Kuzinski, I.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting with the stipulation to withhold executive session minutes until matters are resolved.
I second that.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, I.
Merron Goldstein, I.
Mayor?
Maryla Chappelle, I.
Cindy Kuzinski, I.
I make a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip request for EHS We the People competition to DC VA four twenty-one, twenty twenty-three to four twenty-five, twenty twenty-three. Woo!
I'll second that.
Ben?
Heck yeah.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
Shannon? Shannon? Shannon Dunham, I.
Merron Goldstein, I.
Mayor?
Mayor La Chapelle, I.
And Cindy Kuzensky, absolutely, I.
No playing guitar in it. I make a motion to approve the first reading of MASC Recommended New Policy, DBC Budget Deadlines and Schedules.
I second that. Oh, sorry.
Ben?
Uh, Ben Hershey, I.
Lori?
All right, Garcia, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, I.
Merron Goldstein, I.
Mayor?
Mayor La Chapelle, I.
Cindy Kuzensky, I.
Make a motion to approve the first reading of MASC Recommended New Policy, DBD Budget Planning.
I'll second that.
All right, Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Lori?
All right, Garcia, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
Shannon? Shannon Dunham, I.
Aaron?
Merron Goldstein, I.
Mayor?
Mayor La Chapelle, I.
And Cindy Kuzensky, I.
I make a motion to approve the first reading of MASC Recommended New Policy, DBG Budget Adoption Procedures.
I'll second that.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
Lori?
All right, Garcia, I.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, I.
Shannon? Shannon Dunham, I.
Merron Goldstein, I.
Mayor?
Mayor La Chapelle, I.
Cindy Kuzensky, I.
I make a motion to approve the first reading of MASC Recommended New Policy, DBJ Budget Transfer Authority.
I'll second that.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
All right, Garcia, I.
Megan? Megan Harvey, I.
Shannon? Shannon Dunham, I.
Merron Goldstein, I.
Mayor?
Mayor La Chapelle, I.
Cindy Kuzensky, I.
I make a motion to approve the first reading of MASC Recommended New Policy, DD Grants Proposals and Special Projects.
I'll second that.
Ben?
And Hershey, I.
All right, Garcia, I.
Megan Harvey, I.
Shannon Dunham, I.
Aaron Goldstein, I.
Mayor?
Mayor La Chapelle, I.
Cindy Kuzensky, I.
I move to approve the first reading of MASC Recommended New Policy, DH Bonded Employees and Officers.
I'll second that.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, I.
All right, Garcia, I.
Megan Harvey, I.
Shannon Dunham, I.
Merron Goldstein, I.
Mayor?
Mayor La Chapelle, I.
And Cindy Kuzensky, I. I think you broke up a little, Mayor. I believe you said I.
I did say I.
Thank you.
I move to approve the first reading of MASC Recommended New Policy, DIE Audits.
I'll second that.
Ben Hershey, I.
All right, Garcia, I.
Megan Har- Megan Harvey, I.
Shannon Dunham, I.
Merron Goldstein, I.
Mayor?
Mayor La Chapelle, I.
Cindy Kuzensky, I.
I make a motion, oh, I lost my highlighting. Okay. Uh, I make a motion to um, approve the first reading of MASC Recommended New Policy, DJ Purchasing.
I'll second that.
Ben Hershey, I.
All right, Garcia, I.
Megan Harvey, I.
Shannon? Sorry, Shannon Dunham, I.
Merron Goldstein, I.
Mayor?
Mayor La Chapelle, I.
Cindy Kuzensky, I.
I move to approve the first reading of MASC Recommended New Policy, DJE Procurement Requirements.
I'll second that.
Nope, you're unmute, Ben.
Ben Hershey, I.
All right, Garcia, I.
Megan Harvey, I.
Shannon Dunham, I.
Merron Goldstein, I.
Mayor?
Mayor La Chapelle, I.
Cindy Kuzensky, I.
I move to approve the first reading of MASC Recommended New Policy, DK Payment Procedures.
I'll second that.
Ben Hershey, I.
All right, Garcia, I.
Megan Harvey, I.
Shannon Dunham, I.
Merron Goldstein, I.
Mayor?
Mayor La Chapelle, I.
Cindy Kuzensky, I.
I move to approve the first reading of MASC Recommended Changes to DI Fiscal Accounting and Reporting.
I'll second that.
Ben Hershey, I.
All right, Garcia, I.
Megan Harvey, I.
Shannon Dunham, I.
Merron Goldstein, I.
Mayor La Chapelle, I.
And Cindy Kuzensky, I.
I move to approve the first reading of MASC Recommended Changes to GBA Equal Employment Opportunity.
I'll second that.
Ben Hershey, I.
All right, Garcia, I.
Megan Harvey, I.
Shannon Dunham, I.
Merron Goldstein, I.
Mayor?
Mayor La Chapelle, I.
Cindy Kuzensky, I.
I move to approve the first reading of MASC Recommended Changes to GCF Professional Staff Hiring.
I'll second that.
Ben Hershey, I.
All right, Garcia, I.
Megan Harvey, I.
Shannon Dunham, I.
Merron Goldstein, I.
Mayor La Chapelle, I.
Cindy Kuzensky, I.
I move to approve the first reading of MASC Recommended Changes to KCD Public Gifts to the School.
I'll second that.
Ben Hershey, I.
All right, Garcia, I.
Megan Harvey, I.
Shannon Dunham, I.
Merron Goldstein, I.
Mayor La Chapelle.
Cindy Kuzensky, I.
I move to approve the first reading of MASC Recommended Changes to JH Student Absences and Excuses.
I'll second that.
Ben Hershey, I.
All right, Garcia, I.
Megan Harvey, I.
Shannon Dunham, I.
Merron Goldstein, I.
Mayor La Chapelle, I.
Cindy Kuzensky, I.
I move to approve the first reading of MASC Recommended Changes to JKAA Physical Restraint of Students.
I'll second that.
Ben Hershey, I.
All right, Garcia, I.
Megan Harvey, I.
Shannon Dunham, I.
Merron Goldstein, I.
Mayor La Chapelle, I.
Cindy Kuzensky, I.
I move to approve the first reading of MASC Recommended Changes to JLC Student Health Services and Requirements.
I'll second that.
Ben Hershey, I.
All right, Garcia, I.
Megan Harvey, I.
Shannon Dunham, I.
Merron Goldstein, I.
Mayor La Chapelle, I.
Cindy Kuzensky, I.
I move to approve a three-year review of policy JLC-A Food Allergy, No Changes.
I'll second that.
Ben Hershey, I.
All right, Garcia, I.
Megan Harvey, I.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, I.
Merron Goldstein, I.
Mayor La Chapelle, I.
And Cindy Kuzensky, I.
I move to approve the first reading of New Policy, JLCE Congem, No MASC Policy Exists.
I'll second that.
Ben Hershey, I.
All right, Garcia, I.
Megan Harvey, I.
Shannon Dunham, I.
Merron Goldstein, I.
Mayor La Chapelle, I.
And Cindy Kuzensky, I. Last one.
But it's highlighted. I didn't know if that had any significance.
Oh, no, it does not. It was just added to the policy. Oh, added to the agenda, sorry.
Yeah, it's just a new addition.
Gotcha. Um, so last but not least, I move to approve the first reading of MASC Recommended New Policy, DGA Authorized Signatures.
I'll second that.
Ben Hershey, I.
All right, Garcia, I.
Megan Harvey, I.
Shannon Dunham, I.
Merron Goldstein, I.
Mayor La Chapelle, I.
And Cindy Kuzensky, I. And Megan, you need a glass of water. So thank you very much.
Yes, thank you so much, Megan.
Thank you for all the quick seconding. I felt very good.
Okay, our next meetings are March fourteenth and March twenty-eighth. Uh, and that will be the tentative budget public hearing. Um, we are going to now roll call into executive session and we will not be returning. So um, I wish everybody else good night and we will roll call in. So Ben?
Ben Hershey, good night.
Lori?